Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the September the 12th, 2016 meeting of the Al County Board of Commissioners. Chairman Walker is on vacation. He's taken his yearly retreat with his wife and family. We wish him well. And also Commissioner Tony Brown, I think, is gone on vacation also. We don't know if they're vacationing together, but at least they're getting a little time off. Everybody needs a little bit of time for their families. So at this time, we'll call the meeting to order. And I'll ask Mr. Crawford, if he will, to lead us in the prayer. And Commissioner Hollifield, if he will, to lead us into pledge.
Let's go to our Heavenly Father in prayer. Your Heavenly Father, thank you for the beautiful day you've given us and keeping us safe in our daily adventures today in our life. As we come together tonight as a board of commissioners, I ask that each decision that we make be pleasing in your sight and that we do what's best for our county. Your Lord, we have special prayers for a city that's not too far from us. The city of Shelby lost a police officer today. Comfort his family during this hard time and take care of them and be with that department and that city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Hey, let's all place the flag and come to attention. Place your hand over your heart and side along with me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, gentlemen, have before you the minutes. If you've had time to look over those. And I'll open up the floor for a motion when you're ready.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion. Have a second.
I'll second.
Have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You have the agenda presented. It's been prepared by staff. You've had time to look at that. We have any additions or corrections or additions to the agenda?
Chair, make a motion to approve the agenda that's presented.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Agenda is approved, 100 percent. Okay, this is our first appointment tonight, 5:05. Recognition of the Fishers of Men Sunday School Class. And we see a room full of handsome men, okay, and maybe some ladies here. It's with Pleasant Gardens Baptist Church. And I'll turn this over to Randy. You want to handle that or you want to Ashley?
Um, Ashley, go ahead.
Yeah, we'll turn it over to our county manager to talk about.
Sure. Commissioner Hollifield had requested several months back for the opportunity to recognize this great group of gentlemen. And since we had been recognizing some worthy folks, he had said there's definitely maybe no one or no group that needs to be overlooked, especially the Fishers of Men Sunday School Class. I have seen firsthand the work they do. And it's fantastic and is very needed in our community. They're known for building wheelchair ramps. And I've seen that firsthand. And they do a great job and should be commended. And they definitely deserve the praise tonight and the recognition. And I know Commissioner Hollifield may have a few more words to say and can introduce the speaker for tonight. But I think on behalf of those that have benefited from their work, I think they deserve a thank you.
Well, I've been associated and a member of the Fishers of Men for about four years now. And one of the reasons I got associated and joined the church or become a member of the Fishers of Men class is because of what they do in the community. And that's a, you know, I've heard good work about all the ramps for being built. And I've heard that mainly from Willis and Frank. They told me all, told me quite a bit about that and got me real interested. And also the wood ministry, you know, the group really cuts and delivers a lot of wood thanks to the needy during the winter months. And we got this, there's a handout right now. And I'm suppose somebody's going, y'all going to get up and sort of walk through this a little bit? You going to do this, Joe?
Joe Rogan.
Now, you're on camera. Remember this, Matt.
Yes, okay. I've got my best side looking at you right now.
Where's the preacher at? We certainly appreciate the opportunity to come here this evening. We certainly appreciate you being aware, making other folks aware of what we do. This is the crew, for the most part. The oldest person we have working with us now is Don Horn. And Don came over as first mate on Columbus's ship. So you can see that all of us, for the most part, are gray-headed and full of retirement, which we absolutely love. And one of the main reasons we enjoy it so much is the Fishers of Men and the opportunities we have to serve the needy in this county. We've put together a very short book for you that describes somewhat the activities that we're involved in. Ramp building is just one of many things that we do. Invariably, when we go to ramp, build a ramp, we see something else that needs done. And we try to assist as we can on that. We had one last year, the year before last, I believe it was, that we spent an entire week. A needy family that when we got there, we got the ramp built. The child was a handicapped child at the age of 12 or 13. Also had an elderly mother, maternal figure for the family, that was battling cancer and had several operations, was also confined. And when we finished up, we had a very small section at the end of the ramp that we needed to pour concrete for. And when we asked for water, the lady that we were actually working with on building the ramp went to her car and brought us back two or three jugs of water. It was at that point in time that we realized that they had no running water in the house. They had not had water for approximately two years. And under investigation, we found out that the pump was gone. At a period of time, they were not there. Someone had gone in and stole all of the copper piping out from underneath the house. So it ended up that we spent over a week working at that particular site and putting in a pump, replumbing the house. You'll see in the report there that, you know, we purchased hot water heaters and toilets and sinks and got them back on their feeding going. Every time we think that we've completed all the ramps, folks, the door just opens again. Tommy Henley is our director, our leader. We voted on him, incidentally, to be that. We were looking for somebody that knew nothing about construction and who thought they knew the answer to everything. And so we selected Tommy. But he does keep us in line. And without Tommy, and his drive, you know, there's lots of mornings we give up on it. But he keeps on pushing us. There is just so much need in this county, folks, for anybody willing to help. And here about a month ago, we thought we had all the ramps called up. Within a matter of a couple of days, Tommy got six more calls. And that's just, just the way it goes. And that's the reason we average approximately 45 ramps a year. That's almost a ramp a week. And it's for all kinds of things. We work with the school system on handicapped kids, kids with disabilities. We look at wreck victims. We've got two, and we've reported on that, we built ramps for two teenage age boys who will never walk again. The elderly. One of the most blessed ramps that we've ever built was for a 93-year-old World War II vet and his 91-year-old wife. And their house sat down off the road. And he couldn't get out to go to church on Sunday morning. So we built them a ramp. And when the ramp was completed, then he asked that we all come down to the front porch. And we went down to the front porch, and we joined hands, and he prayed for us. And then he walked up the ramp by himself. You talk about moving. We invite you to come anytime and join us. Most weeks, it's on Wednesday morning is our first ramp, and then we go from there as to what's needed thereafter. But feel free at any time to join us. Again, we appreciate you folks and what you all do for the county. And if you see someone in need, please feel free to call. Thank you. Is anyone else wishing to speak from the group? I know there's several over here. You want to, Matt, go ahead. Randy, you got anything else you want to add?
You didn't mention about those good breakfasts you do once a month.
Well, yeah.
They're pretty nice, you know.
For the Saturday of each month, we do a breakfast, $5 donation. And that money goes for various and sundry things that the church sees fit for it to be used for. And incidentally, I mentioned in here, we work solely on donations. We're not funded by the church in any, in any way. The only monies we ever draw from the church are, for instance, when we run short, we pull off the, off the breakfast money, you know. But the breakfast money is there for, to be used anywhere within the church. And it's not a part of the funding of the budget process of the church itself. So here again, we certainly invite you to breakfast. You won't find a better breakfast anywhere. And Matthew has been there. And of course, Randy has been there. And we'd love to see you there. You don't have to eat Cheryl's pancakes. But you can if you want. Barry, you said you'd go this month, didn't you?
I have been.
I'll say a good group of gentlemen that take time out of your schedules to help people in need. And as a county, we're getting older. And people are always going to be in need. But for any community to work, government can't do it all. It takes good-hearted people who help each other out to make this world the place it is. And I appreciate everything that you do.
You know, many times when I was working at EMS and our emergency service directors back there and our deputy director of emergency management, we would go out on ambulance many times. And he can tell you, probably still many more out there. I'm sure that we could keep you busy five, six days a week, let you off on Sunday. But the need is out there. You said that. And typically, that's when you will see it. A lot of these people wouldn't ask for help. I know a couple of times, I'd go in and a couple of your members, I would call them and mention it to them. I've located a family. Is there anything we can do to help? And they was always very gracious to go out and assess the situation and look at the need. And I appreciate what you do.
The agents of God are right here to put it all together and make it work.
Yeah. And that's what it takes. Before you go, we have a little, little presentation, a little certificate of appreciation. We'll do that for the whole group. If one of you want to come up for the whole group.
Women generally, you want to have a Kodak moment?
Yeah, we'll have a Kodak moment, too. We'll, we'll take, I'll read this and we'll take this brief recess to present this. Says, Kelly McDown.
I'm embarrassed, Dave.
Certificate of Appreciation.
Can't keep it up.
This certificate is awarded to John Roach, Fishers of Men, Sunday School Class, in recognition of your selfless dedication and generous contribution to others. Al County Board of Commissioners, September the 12th, 2016. Thank you. We'll take this a brief recess. All right, we're back in session just after just a brief recess, honoring the and recognizing the Fishers of Men from Pleasant Garden Baptist Church for all the work they do. Pretty much on schedule, we'll look at 5:15, first appointments, administrative items. Mr. Wooton?
Sure, I'll jump right in. Every month, we have very routine items that we are required to bring to you. The first one, we have several different fee waivers. I'll wait on the EMS in case there's any questions from, for Mr. Kaler. But you have a water leak waiver. You can do them all together, I think, is fun. And the information is there on that one. You have an occupancy tax penalty that we would ask that you waive. This is a special situation where someone has passed away and they had to be out of state and that sort of thing. And they're typically a very good payer on that tax. And the last one is a sort of a special situation where staff is requesting the waiver of an EMS bill, which is something we don't do often, but we are asking that you waive that bill. And Mr. Keller is here if you had any questions about it. There's not a lot of detail we can get into about the patient, but as far as the situation.
Anything else on that, Ash? Jim, you've heard the presentation by Mr. Wooton. Any questions? Emergency Management Director's here, or the, where's the Services Director? Any questions for him, reference that. And we are allowed to be able to approve those all at once.
I don't have any questions.
Can you see the three before you? Okay. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to waive the water bill, the late penalty on occupancy tax, and also the EMS bill.
Okay. How much, how much second there?
Have a motion, second. Any further discussion from any of the members? If not, all in favor, motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the next grouping is the, two requests actually from the city of Marion. Just happened that they had two totally different projects they're working on coming around the same time. And they're asking for your consideration. The first one involves some work they're looking to do up on Main Street. You may have noticed on the corner of East Court and Main Street, there's a box, yellow box, says CON. That's a City of Marion electrical box. And they, you know, they connect drop cords to it and that sort of thing for Mountain Glory and different events. What they're wanting to do is run an electrical service from that box across a portion of the courthouse lawn and then come out to the Main Street sidewalk, where they would then do some electrical outlets and that sort of thing. And they have sent an easement for you to look at and approve, if it's okay. The, Mr. Coats, county attorney, has looked at it, didn't see any issue with it. It's very straightforward. So if you'll, if you're okay with that, we'd ask that you approve it.
Okay, gentlemen, you heard the presentation request from the city of Marion. You've had time to read that, I'm sure.
And I'll cover the second one after this.
Motion to grant these.
Have a motion, second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, the, the second request from the city, there is an African-American cemetery on Moorhead Road that is, for many, many years, it was hard to get to, and it was overgrown. And a group of citizens led an effort to clean up the cemetery, cut down trees and brush and improve the appearance so folks could come and pay their respects. One issue has been a lack of good access to the cemetery by the public. And so it just happened a couple of years ago that unfortunately for the community maybe, but the person that owned the property, there was a mobile home that was seized by the US government as part of a, say, illegal activity. And so the US government has owned this mobile home. The city had expressed interest in acquiring the property primarily for access to the cemetery and cleanup and that sort of thing. So the city now has that property, or they're in the process of obtaining it. And they are interested in removing the mobile home and other improvements. I think, you may know, Mr. Crawford, but I think they're planning to do just a simple parking lot so folks can park there and then go to the cemetery. They are proposing that they, that we partner with them, that they do the, hire out the demolition work. And they're asking that the county waive the tipping fees. I believe the demo work was probably $3,000 to $4,000. And the tipping fee is about $1,500. So they're definitely taking more of that cost on. But it's definitely, staff's opinion, a worthwhile project to partner in. So we would ask that you waive that fee.
On our part, would just be the tipping fee, we would not be granting any financial effort out of that.
That's right.
Okay. That's pretty straightforward.
I tell you, gentlemen, if you, if you notice, there's a lot of cemeteries that go unkept.
Yeah.
This is in the city. And familiar with that area through there. And it's, it's worthwhile effort they're putting forth to do this.
The city will maintain that cemetery also. City will maintain that, along with the other. Okay, gentlemen, you heard the presentation request? Floor's open for a motion.
Motion to waive the tipping fee for the mobile home that will be dismantled and removed.
Okay. Second. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of said motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Well, I should say, the last item I had under admin is actually maybe more appropriate for Mr. Keller to talk about it. I'll just give a short intro.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
Maybe he can get an overview of the, the policy. The, the board typically, and we'll get into detail on the policy in a second, but typically, it's actually our policy that when you receive a policy, that you do two readings. We're asking for you to waive that tonight for a policy that has been recommended for our EMS staff. And it involves personal protection equipment. So Mr. Keller can talk about what it means, what that entails, and why we think we need to adopt that pretty quickly and not wait the couple of months. Do you have a, just to address it?
Come on up. Introduce yourself, Mr. Keller. You don't need an introduction.
The policy he is referring to is personal protection equipment, a policy that would change our, essentially our OSHA-approved policy, or that, a policy that meets all the OSHA standards. So as we have talked here over the past several years, the culture of safety change that we embarked upon in 2010 has led us to almost six years without a lost time incident at EMS. So we've reduced all of our different types of injuries, from back injuries to motor vehicle crashes to everything in between. But one of the areas that we have still managed to have difficulty with is eye exposures to EMS employees. When we looked at the different policies, there's, I think we're going to be here again, leading the way and changing the culture of safety as it relates to eyes, eye protection. So we are having employees, if gloves are on, eyeglasses are on. And that is a pretty straightforward approach. We have, if you look at the amount of workers comp claims that we have had, they, I mean, literally, we've went from hundreds of thousands of dollars prior to 2010 and back injuries, to where in 2014, it was $550 total cost in a year's period. And this, as we've said, this safety program has garnered national attention because essentially, it's unheard of for EMS systems to go this long without significant injuries to employees. But we believe we can further reduce those costs and improve the wellness of our, of our paramedics by proceeding with this. And at the end of the day, it's good common sense for eye protection. If you walk in a number of industrial sites, you've got mandatory eye protection policies. And we're dealing with stuff every single day that's just as dangerous in your eyes as it is on your hands. So that's kind of the 30,000-foot view of the policy.
So we would ask that you approve it tonight. We'll put in the policy manual.
Mr. Chair, I don't have a problem with that. I'll make a motion to approve the EMS personal protective equipment policy. Have a motion.
I'll watch that today.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? Thank you, William, for that. I appreciate that. I think it's, number one is protection of employees. It's, it's a long time needy. But remember, Mr. Walker and I rode together and as many times we'd have those little glasses and he'd reach over and pull them off, put them on me, just to make sure that I was protected. So sometimes we tend to forget that. But when it's in policy, it takes effect. We have a motion, second. And any further discussion?
I believe this is really a good policy, and it needs to be implemented immediately.
Yeah. Okay, no further, no further comments, questions? All in favor of said motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And while you're here, we have a, it's 5:30, so we're just a couple of minutes ahead, the 911 center update.
You have in front of you a proposed contract with Frontier Communications for the installation. And it's a lease agreement as well for three geodiverse vest of phone stations. These are the 911 stations that sit at each terminal. As we've discussed over the past several months, the 911 backup center, that is a requirement by North Carolina general statute to be implemented operationally by June 30th, 2017. We're on track with our plan of getting the center operational. But our request tonight is for you to consider entering a three-year lease contract with Frontier. They are the provider of 911 phone equipment at the primary backup center. Our recommendation, Mr. Walker, our deputy director is, is here as well. Our recommendation is to sync this specific contract for the backup center with our primary center. So when the two, when the primary center's contract comes up, we will be renewing and updating the primary and the backup center at the same time. With this, the total lease payment is $219,920, scheduled to be paid in 10 quarterly lease payments. We do have the Frontier Shield option, which ensures all technology upgrades that occur during the lease period is automatically applied to our equipment. And this again will allow for state-of-the-art communications in the 911 center. When you look at cost comparison, what we are under, or what our lease is at the primary site, this backup project is, is right on track and consistent with our cost at the primary center. I would put in, as I've noted in the memorandum, is requesting the signature on the contract, if you approve it, to be contingent upon the final approval from the North Carolina 911 Board. So this lease has been sent. It needs clearance from them, marking this is 911 fund eligible. And that's what I would ask consideration for, please.
Any questions, gentlemen? Would they, of course, I, Matt, I just looked over at Matt. Would they consider a five-year at any savings? Or do you think the three-year's the best route to go?
Yeah, I think the three-year is the best. The 911 Board, the state board, is discouraging anything more than 36 months at the present, simply because of the next generation 911 technology coming to where all of these contracts, I mean, we've got a lot of navigation to do to get us to next-gen 911. So I think the 36-month is correct in this situation.
Jim, Randy, any, any questions, any further questions or comments or anything? Matt? Okay, floor's open.
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract with Frontier for the 911 backup operations, contingency upon approval of the North Carolina 911 Board for use of the 911 funds.
I'll check.
Have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor of said motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. You know, I'm just thinking.
We were going to update on the, the DOI inspection of the 911 center very quickly. And before I do that, just to update, we had submitted a 911 grant for the backup center. And that was through the 911 Board. That grant was $194,000. We were notified that it has been sent from grant to funding reconsideration, where there was additional paperwork that was required of us since they sent it to funding reconsideration. We should hear on that by the end of September and maybe have an update at the October meeting. But if that funding is awarded, that's going to really assist us in receiving additional funds to implement the backup center. funds to implement the backup center to ensure our 911 fund remains healthy for continued upgrades in the center. Which leads, leads us into reporting to you on the recent Department of Insurance inspection. And Craig is here as well and can answer any questions that you may have, along with myself. Each fire department is inspected by DOI and that translates to the citizens in the room for your fire rating, what you pay on homeowner's insurance, and the communication center is part of that rating. We were rated back in 2015, which would have really looked at year 2014, and the center had a seven, 7.5 rating out of 10. The average in North Carolina is seven to eight of 911 centers. But on the recent inspection, and this was applied to Marion, or I'm sorry, Glenwood and Nebo's recent inspection, the center was at 9.1 out of 10, which was really remarkable. But I think it goes to the efforts that have been put in to upgrade the technology and the systems that are working in the 911 center. The Dobson Tower, the Wildcat Tower, the addition of both of those towers in the county improved that score. The electronic protocols that the Board approved where telecommunications are going through a series of questions when someone reports a fire. They also do that for medical and law enforcement, but in this specific inspection, they're looking at fire. So someone reports they have a gas leak, it goes through a number of questions that are electronically, it gives them instructions over the telephone of how to safely evacuate the area. So all of that combined goes into this overall score. And also the change of our staffing levels to ensure that our 911 calls are being answered in a timely manner went into improving this. So 7.5 to a 9.1, really anything over eight is, I mean, really doing well and we want to continue moving in that direction. So ultimately, our goal was 10. We've got it broken down and know the things that we've got to continue working on to get it there, but certainly made an impact in the overall ratings.
Craig, do you have anything to add?
Yeah. The average, the average being seven to eight in the, across the state, we're very pleased with 911.
The fire department definitely can't blame you for not moving the rate, if you gave them all the effort you give them.
That's one of the discussions we've always had come election time, is trying to lower, may not happen taxes, but if it happens in your fire insurance, what you're paying at home, that homeowners can save $100, $200, it's worth giving another $100 back to the fire department. So when, you know, you talk about your fire tax and people sometimes are against that, is when they look at what their fire departments are saving them in the long run, it's not a lot to give back when it's just a $5 or something. But we appreciate what y'all's work and, and gentlemen, David and Tony's not here, but appreciate the work that this board has done trying to better that system. And anything we can do, I promise you, this, this board, I feel like, I'm not speaking for Mayor Randy, but I think I, I've got their feelings at heart, but anything that we can do as a board to continue that effort, I think you got our full support. Ashley, anything you want to add?
No, I was just thinking, we can do the staff, is maybe have an update to you, not in a meeting, but at least for the information, is to give an update where the rerating process is for the different departments. I won't ask right now about them being prepared for it, but we can have information for you to see all the progress all the departments have been making.
So Craig will have that ready by October maybe.
Our office actually just got the last, we were just notified last week of the rating from Marion, so can definitely put all of that together.
We'll have that ready for next month, just so you're all aware.
Anything for, Wade, you have anything else?
No, we appreciate the support. I think we've done some really good improvements at the 911 center.
I do too.
Got the county on the cutting edge of technology for the center, so we feel really good about it and that team over there has worked really, really hard.
Freeing up some 911 funds has helped us tremendously here as a rural county versus some larger cities that had a lot of money, you know, they could actually put into. So it's helped us tremendously as a board too, to make decisions, what we've done.
Okay. Anything else on that?
Thank you.
Okay. Look forward to hearing your report back next month, sir. Okay, we're a little bit ahead of schedule, about seven minutes ahead. Let's drop down to old business, item A, water project updates.
Sure. In your agenda, I mentioned the two water projects, but I wanted to mention that Mr. Harmon and I went to Raleigh last week. Sometimes you go to meetings in Raleigh and they're a waste of time and gas and effort, but it was certainly worth our time that day. The Environmental Management Commission, as you may recall, is the entity that is responsible for approving a reclassification process for a drinking water source, in this case, Lake James. And for several years, we've been working on that process to have Lake James reclassified as a water source. And a lot of the times, people don't hear about it here and it's in the background, but there's still things happening. So where we are now is their staff has been working on research, they've been doing water testing, a lot of communication with staff for many, many months now. And they had a presentation to make to the commission this past week. At this point, they had asked for permission to move forward with the process and to have a public hearing here in the, in the community. And so the commission heard all the reasons why they should move forward and they approved it unanimously. So sometime in the next three or four months, they will schedule a public hearing here in McDowell County to receive public comment on the reclassification. So that's a big step for us. It's something that we've been working on for many, many years and will probably take many, many more years to have it come to completion, but it's something that I know this board and prior boards have been passionate about. So we'll definitely keep the board informed on when the date will be, the public will be notified. It will be here, it won't be in the courthouse, it'll be at a neutral site, but the board is certainly welcome to be there. Staff will be there representing us and certainly the public will be invited. So that's exciting and we'll keep you up to date. The two other projects that, for so long, I know it sounded like a broken record, we hope to get started soon, we hope to get started soon. We have the Nebo Interchange Water Project and the Universal Waterline Project. Both projects, I can happily say, are under contract. The Nebo project has started, believe they have started on the southern end and are working back towards, towards the Caboose area on Harmony Grove Road, but they are both underway, will soon to be on Universal. And they're a long time coming. Took a lot of work on, part engineers and staff to get some of the funding identified on the Nebo project, but it was certainly a worthwhile effort. So we will have a groundbreaking for that, even though it started, we can still do a groundbreaking on the 22nd and we'll get that time and location out to you and notify the press and everything. But definitely a worthwhile project, an exciting project to get water to that interchange and what it might mean for job creation and business development there. The other project, the Universal project, this is a much smaller project, will take a lot less time and there's really only one customer, which is the county, but we are still excited about it. The city is really excited about it because they get a free water line out of it and additional water revenue. But it was a good, a good deal for us to be able to do that and we're excited the city is partnering as well. That project will start probably in the next two weeks. There's a railroad crossing, which is always complicated and expensive and all those things, but we'll hopefully have that done by Christmas, if not sooner, so we'll have another city water customer.
Nice Christmas present.
Yeah, it is.
It was annexed July 1st, so the territory grew a little bit too, so. That's about all I had on the water projects. Any questions about things?
Continue to move forward. That's been our goal ever since I've been here.
Sir, I did, on the topic, I had a call today from someone who lives on Stacy Hill Road. He said, "I've noticed you're putting down pipe. Are you, are you going to take a ride and come up my way?" And I said, "I'm, I'm sorry to say we're not. I know there's extreme interest in that area." We've met with folks in years prior. If, if I had an unlimited amount of money, we would be running a water line on that road right now too, but the estimate for that line is probably about $1 million. So that's going to take time to figure out how to pay for that and other areas that have expressed interest. So probably what staff will do to keep things moving is we'll get this project underway, but keep our eyes focused on the future, because if we're going to have a water plant one day, we need more customers and more lines in the ground. So we'll work with the engineering team and bring back some recommendations on our next steps in the next couple of months.
Stacy Hill's always had, since I've been on this board, been issues there, so having kind of had tire loops in.
That really would make a good loop right there. And like you said, that there is some issues with, with good water in that area. And I think that, in fair view also, that ties the lines right back together.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Okay, we're still just a couple of minutes, I think we might be, can we get the board appointments in before, or do you think? We're about two minutes out. Okay. Let's go to item B under old business.
Come in.
Yes.
Okay, this is the second reading for a vacancy on the focal point advisory committee. We have one application as from David Setser. And is the first reading for the library board of trustees. They have three openings and their board is by districts and the three openings are Nebo, Old Ford, and at-large. And the nursing adult care committee, I am still advertising and I have had no applications.
It's a very important board too. So nobody on the library board?
We do not have yet. That's just the first reading, we'll advertise it and bring it back.
Okay. So we do have a second reading for the focal point advisory committee, David Setser. He's the only applicant.
So we have two boards out here that need some openings and we have not had any applications or requests.
Can you repeat the names of the boards? The first board is the focal point advisory committee and that's through the senior center. And the second is the library board of trustees and they have three openings, Nebo, Old Ford, and at-large. And Marlin said they did have interest in that. They have two that are interested in that.
Okay.
The nursing adult care committee, they tour the nursing homes and make recommendations there. We do not have any applications for that and they have a couple of vacancies.
They are very important committees.
I would advise anyone that is watching us on the tube, if you're interested, please contact the appropriate folks and do a little volunteer work and get on some of these committees. Have your voice heard out here.
Okay, gentlemen, we have a second reading for the...
I'll make a motion, we approve David Setser to the focal point advisory committee.
I'll check at that.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor of said motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have a 5:45 appointment, CDBG public hearing closeout, and I will declare us into a public hearing setting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Commissioner Hallifford and I were talking about this item earlier and it's hard to believe, but it's been five years since we had Governor Perdue at the time that came to Marion and announced the expansion for Rock 10, which is now West Rock. So we've had a change of governors and a change in business name, but we had partnered with the company at the time to get them in the old Swift Gailey, Gailey and Lord building on the 70 East. We had several different grants that we worked with and this one in particular is the CDBG building reuse. That was a grant for $750,000 and I believe primarily it was used for the HVAC system in that facility. So they put in brand-new equipment when they went in and just almost made it a new building. It's, it was a very nice project and very nice to see in an older building. The return on the, the catch, I guess, on the, the grant was that they had to hire folks. And typically with CDBG projects, there has to be a benefit for low-to-moderate income individuals. In this case, they had to hire 75 low-to-moderate individuals and a total of 124. And so there was a couple, as we're getting into this project, we're still coming out of the Great Recession and so their business is dependent on, you know, people buying, you know, Chick-fil-A and different things that they make for. So there were a couple of years where we asked for extensions from the state and were granted so they could get their hiring, hiring done. They have completed their hiring and they have hired 96 low-to-moderate individuals and over 124 full-time folks. So that was exciting to hear they've gone over the target. So as part of the closeout of the project, we're required to have a public hearing and talk about the investment, which I've done, talk about the jobs, which I've done, and also receive any comments from the public on good, bad, indifferent about the grant. And we will submit those comments, if any, to the state as far as the closeout package. The company has communicated with me, they were grateful for the investment and the opportunity to work with us. That's all I have and...
Okay. What we'll do, we'll start on left-hand side. If anybody has any comment from the public about this CDBG, there's always a mouthful, closeout public grant. Yes.
I think it's wonderful that they've hired 124 people. That's great. Good news.
Anyone else on the left side? Now we'll move over to the right side. Any public comment? Okay. All right. Very talkative crowd tonight.
I like the Chick-fil-A boxes.
I do too. Yeah, when you sit down and think about what all goes on right here in McDowell County, you know, it's just, those little Chick-fil-A boxes, you may not think about it, but eat Chick-fil-A and open those boxes up. And that's made right here in Marion, North Carolina, for the most part, so.
Now, one of the things that we need to realize here, it says hire 124 people. Now, this is above and beyond of what their normal staffing is. So 124 people can be a small industry out here in the world.
Sure.
So basically what we've got here is basically the amount of people that's equivalent to a small company that has been added to an existing company. And, you know, we're seeing this throughout the county and so...
Talk about that later.
Yeah. Yes. Okay, we'll need a motion to go out of public here.
I'll make a motion, we go out of public here.
Second.
All in favor of motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, from this point, Mr. Luton?
We're done with that part and we will submit the comment as part of the minutes to the state as we close it out, so appreciate it.
Okay, so we're still a little bit ahead. Let's drop down to new business, item A.
That would be the goal setting.
Is that going to take, do we need to...
It'll take just a few minutes. We've got time. Every year, maybe every two years, but the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners sends a request out to each of the 100 counties and asks that each board, if they have any legislative goals, that they submit them in writing. if they have any legislative goals, that they submit them in writing to the organization. And then in January of '17, there will be a convening in Raleigh where representatives from as many counties as possible will then vote on those goals and essentially set a lobbying plan for that legislative year. Commissioner Hollifield has represented the county before, and so he knows what that process is like. Sometimes it's horse trading when you get down there. You have urban counties with different interests than rural counties, and they try to, you know, compromise sometimes and, you know, please 100 different counties, which can be difficult, I would imagine. So they are asking for our goals, if we have any. I took the opportunity to put two in the memo that I've heard from the board. And there may be others, but the two that I've heard fairly recently would be the ability for school systems to have local control over their schedule. They had that ability until about 10 years ago. The tourism lobby didn't necessarily like that because, you know, if schoolchildren were starting school in early August, they saw that as lost revenue because people weren't traveling to the beach or the mountains or camps. So they lobbied the legislature who set up the school calendar law that set when, you know, schools could start. And they have some exceptions for school systems that are affected by snow. They can start typically a week earlier, but for the most part, they have to go by the state rule. So the school system here is going to ask, through their association and their lobbying efforts, that it be changed. And I know our association is going to ask for it as well, to allow that local decision-making for every county, just because, you know, we know best what schedule works here. So that was one goal. The other one have been the meetings and conferences where this comes up a lot from rural counties, where the state changed the transportation funding formula two or three years ago. I think the intention was a good one in that they tried to take politics out of transportation funding. You would have instances where very powerful legislators would do a four-lane road in an area where there were 5,000 people, and it wasn't going where it was needed the most. There's been an opinion that, and primarily from rural counties who have been affected most by this, that that's maybe not, the formula came up with, maybe wasn't the best and the most fair. You know, a lot of projects that were being designed had been permitted, and they were just dropped off the map, the radar. For us, it was the widening of US 221 south of Marion. That was probably within a year or two preceding. And when the new formula came out, it didn't score as high as some of the projects in Mecklenburg and Wake who have the higher traffic. So it was dropped way down the list. So there have been a lot of interest from rural counties to tweak that formula, maybe have two separate pots of money for urban and rural. There's lots of different suggestions out there, but...
I'll make a comment on that. If I'm wrong, can correct if I'm wrong, but regional, this spot score we're doing now, every project went to Buncombe County. They got it. And we might get some divisional properties. It's still many years out, but the current formula, none of your rural counties around Buncombe County saw a dollar. So that right there tells me that it's not fair.
And I think logical people understand there are a lot of cars and a lot of people in Buncombe County. No one is disputing that. We have a lot of counties in the state that have a lot of growth, and we should all be appreciative of that.
My major concern is, they're going to grow so big, they're going to eventually be here.
Right.
We've got to prepare for the future. If we don't take the steps to prepare, we're catching up and we never catch up. If they don't give us any money, we're not able to do that.
So in summary, the suggestion from staff is to have those two goals put forward. And I know, I've heard from the association staff, say, "Yes, we've heard that quite a bit, those two items." So they'll definitely, I would think, get moved forward for their lobbying plan. But if you had any other suggestions, we've got a little bit of time before these are due. I think about a week and a half or two. By consensus, we'll go ahead and submit those. If you think of something in the next day or two, just please let me know.
Gentlemen, like you said, if there's anything at all that you think of, these are two priorities.
There was one that came up at a board meeting about six, eight months ago, and Commissioner Brown was one that was leading the discussion. And I remember the comment was made, "We need to get that to a legislative committee," but I can't remember what that was. Might have to research our records on that. Goes back several months, six or seven months, probably.
We'll check that out.
Yeah. This was the school calendar, you know, that shows up just about every year. And the folks down on the coast, eastern part of the state, sort of keeps it the way they want it, I believe. Now, I have served on a couple of these committees down there, and they're very worthwhile. Agriculture and environmental, but I was more interested in, they got about seven, eight committees. So I would encourage members of this board to get involved in. It is a good little trip to go down there, though. You know, it's a 400-mile round trip. Takes a bigger part of the day for a two-hour meeting.
We have another public, any other comment? We have another public hearing at 6 o'clock. Can we slide down to item E under New Business? Some of the tax matters may take just a little bit longer. It's the Glenwood Christmas Parade road closure.
Sure, that one won't take very long. From, I guess, three or four years, Mr. Crawford may know, just from that community, but Glenwood, Ruhr 10, has been putting on a great event there in the community with their Christmas parade and all different types of fireworks and different things. But as far as the parade itself, the procedure has been for their club to send a form to the county for the county manager to sign and send it into NC DOT. The state has changed their rules a little bit. They're now requiring an actual closure by the county of that road. So the city does this quite often for Mountain Glory, for the Homecoming Parade, and Donut Festival and different things. So it's very similar to what they do. We have, it's actually an ordinance in your packet, and it's a model ordinance that lays out the date and the times and the stretch of road and that sort of thing. But assuming you approve that, we will send that to DOT, and the road will be allowed to be closed. So there will be a lot of angry people in Glenwood if you say no.
There's a lot of candy down there, too.
You come, there's no rules once you close the road. They'll throw candy. I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance declaring the road closure for the 2016 Glenwood Christmas Parade.
I second it.
Have a motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor of said motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous decision. You can carry that back to Glenwood, Matthew. Okay, we have a 6 o'clock appointment, Economic Development, public hearing. I will declare us into a public hearing setting. Mr. Wooten?
Yes, sir.
Just on this one, too.
We will, I'll give an overview of this company and as much as I can, and the incentive. And then please ask for a comment from the public. We have, the Universal Building has some empty space now that we've been marketing to different folks. And a couple of months ago, we had a client look at the space, and this is the space behind the Skill Center. And we had a company express some interest in that space and moving here and creating jobs, which is what we want to hear. So the company, get the number here. The company would create 36 jobs, and we do typically $3,000 per job for an incentive. And since we own the building, it's a little bit different this time. Instead of a cash payout, we're proposing that we do one year's free rent. And the balance would be sort of a match on a building reuse grant. So it's not a direct payment to the company. It's a free space for a year and then investing in our building, which is good. So the incentive, it's a little bit different than just a regular payment, but it's a little bit innovative. But this is a metalworking company, I can say that. And the state is working with them on a one NC grant application. So we're not allowed to announce, since it is a state project, but it is metalworking and it is 36 jobs.
Okay, we'll start over on the left. Am I receiving any public comment? We just looked at 124 jobs 5, 10 minutes ago, and now we're looking at 36. Any public comment on the left side? We'll start, Ms. Johnson.
Sounds like a good deal to me.
Anyone else going back through on the left side? Let's move over to the right side. Any public, it looks like he's fixing to say something back there.
Yeah, I think it's great, especially the location. Location, 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 always good. Where they're doing metalworking with the college, where they do the classes at. And then some people may as soon walk back into the job, way out the back door.
That's right.
From their metalworking classes, I think.
Anyone else like to make comment on the right side? Okay, gentlemen? Motion to go out of public here? Or do you want to do both? The next one's not until 6:15.
Yeah, we've got a little time.
I'm like, why should I go out of public here?
I'd second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We would ask that you improve the incentive.
Okay. Gentlemen?
Make a motion to improve the incentive for this company in amount of $108,000.
I second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Just a follow-up comment. Mr. Parrot did a good job of touting the facility there. A lot of the companies that have shown the space, you know, were very impressed with the Skill Center. And I know it's a big selling point for Mr. Abernathy to bring in folks and walk through and see, you know, actual people taking classes in the trades that they need workers for. So it's well thought out, and it's a good economic development tool as well as a training center.
Because all the way back to several years ago, we purchased that building. I say it over and over and over, it's probably one of the greatest things this board did, is to step forward by a leap of faith and purchase that building, and it's coming to fruition. And just the rent we collect off of it will help pay that building off.
The building is full or will be. You've got a skilled training center out there. So it's serving the need and serving the purpose for why it was purchased.
Exactly right. And that's what it's about. One of the few...
It's paying for itself through rent.
It's paying for itself.
Paying for itself.
Yes. Okay, let's move about eight minutes ahead. Tax matters, you think?
I can do that.
You can?
Yes, sir.
Item B under New Business, gentlemen?
For tax matters, typically we just have the releases and refunds, et cetera. We do have a couple of different things. You may remember last year, we had several elderly exemptions and nonprofit exemptions, et cetera, that came in later than the deadline. And at that point, you had said that was okay. You know, we had a cutoff of probably November, I think. But you've got a couple of those, again, where, you know, folks that didn't get the mail or, you know, they were maybe in a home or at a state, that sort of thing. So you've got, it looks about like seven or eight that are asking for a late elderly exemption. You've got a couple of, you've got a religious exemption, you've got a charitable exemption, you've got, and then two exemptions for common property for homeowners associations, which are, they're tax exempt as well. So staff would recommend, and there's one other item in there that we are going to, staff is going to table, if we have that ability, as far as an appeal, we're going to withdraw that. But we would ask that you approve the, these late applications as well as the typical releases and refunds.
And that one that you want to table would be that first letter?
Right.
Okay, gentlemen? Had time to look over those, or? Any further questions or comments for Mr. Wooten?
One more thing, if you, excuse me. We do have a write-off request from the tax collector. We're only allowed to collect taxes for a 10-year period, and after that, we're no longer allowed to collect those. And so without an action of the board, they actually stay on our system. It's sort of strange, we can't just delete it off based on statute. You have to approve it. So we would ask that any taxes over the 10-year period be written off. And that is, the request is in your packet from the tax collector.
And you do see the letter from our tax collector, on your fray?
Motion to approve appeals and exemptions.
Second. Second. Any further discussion, comments? All in favor of motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And let's see, we're still about two minutes. See much we can, the sidearm, we can handle those two?
In North Carolina, probably other states, but in North Carolina, the board has the authority for retiring law enforcement officers to allow them to take their badge home with them, which people may not realize, but that badge is county property. But retiring employees can request that badge when they retire. So we've got two employees that have recently retired. You may have seen the reports in the newspaper, and you all know them very well. Ricky Crisp and Brenda Vaughn served honorably in the sheriff's office. And the sheriff has requested that Mr. Crisp and Ms. Vaughn be able to receive their badge as a donation. And also, Mr. Crisp has asked to purchase his sidearm, which the details of the sidearm are in the resolution. But typically, we do a sale for a dollar for retiring law enforcement officers. So staff would recommend, there's two separate resolutions for Mr. Crisp and for Ms. Vaughn. Request that you approve those so they can be recognized for their years of service.
I'll make a motion, we approve the resolution authorizing the donation of county-owned property for Brenda. And also, let me get to it. Approve the resolution authorizing the sale of county-owned property, being the sidearm, to Mr. Crisp and also donate his badge.
I second that.
I'm going to say, any further discussion or questions? Like to say, you know, we congratulate both of those for their years of service. Sometimes in law enforcement, you know, years ago, I remember Earl Webb being there when I was in elementary school, serving seemed like 50 years in law enforcement. If Andy was here, he could tell us exactly, I'm sure. But, you know, now with the, everything that goes on with law enforcement, we see it every day. Just in neighboring county, an officer, basically fatally wounded gunshot. I tried to follow that just a little bit. I was a little bit behind on that, didn't know that had happened. And I picked up on it, I think, yesterday. And it's sad that you see stuff like this go on. Most time, it's just like highway problems said today, just obey the law. So that prevents you from getting tickets, just don't do wrong. But sometimes that's not the case, and we see that a lot now. So we appreciate their service. Any further discussion? Any other comments? All in favor of motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have four minutes before our next public hearing. I think we'll have enough time to do the ordinance discussion.
Yeah.
Take five minutes for that instead of three.
I could try. Sometimes you get to a point where you... Sometimes you get to a point where you've got too much or not enough.
And we're moving right along, too.
I could mention, just to fill time, but also to inform you that we have been invited to go back to the Carson House for the October meeting. So, we'll make sure to, you know, acknowledge their invitation. And that will be, let's see, that would be October tenth. And we will post the change in meeting time and location. Probably meet at four, if that's okay. Like to get in and have a pretty short meeting and respect them so they're not there until ten o'clock at night, like it's happened sometimes. It's always a pleasure to go there. I had someone visit my office a couple of weeks ago that was from out of the, out of the community. And he said, you know, what's that picture behind your desk? I said, that's the Carson House. I have a print from the nineteen thirties of the Carson House on my wall. And, you know, I was proud to explain that that was the first seat of government for McDowell County. And I said, we go back every year and sort of relive those early days and have the people's business take place there. And it's definitely an honor. And we're fortunate that they ask us back every year. So, we'll let them know that we'll plan on it and hopefully have a great meeting. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate. Sometimes, it's been very warm. They do have air conditioning, but it is obviously an older house. So, we'll take cooler weather if we can have it.
We were out there one meeting before you two came on the board and we could hear something moving. And we thought it may have been Mr. Carson walking across the floors and it was squirrels running through the walls. So, needless to say, we were sitting there. I had my hair was standing up on my neck and I was young. That was my first meeting. And I was a little scared. But Mr. Haney assured me that it was not Colonel John Carson walking in to meet with us that night. So, a little bit of scaredness there for a first-year commissioner. We still got a couple of minutes. Reports?
I have six fifteen on my.
You have six fifteen? All right, mine's a little slow.
Mine's quarter to the horizon.
And six fifteen.
All right, we're trying to milk this thing for everything it's worth. We have a six fifteen economic development public hearing, another one. So, it's exciting. I declare us into public hearing setting for an economic development discussion.
Yes, sir. This one's a little bit different in that it is a company that is in the county. Again, it's confidential because they are working with the state on a one NC grant. We can tell you they are proposing to hire fourteen people. It is a woodworking job industry, which is, fits into our, our need and our background, our training. Again, we have the same proposed incentive of three thousand dollars per job. And this would be more of a typical incentive where they would do the hiring, show the proof, and then request payment for the payment per job. This is, you know, different. They're all, it's, it's, every company you talk to, they have a uniqueness about them and this is certainly one of those. Hopefully, we will be able to share more details when the state moves along on their process. So, folks can start applying and be hired for this one and the first one. But we're at the mercy of the state whenever they get around to it. The, the goal for this company is for them to start hiring by the end of the year. Another good company. That's all I had on that one. Again, we'll take comments.
Okay, we'll start on, you want to start on right-hand side this time? Let's start on the left-hand side. We always start out with the left for some reason. Because the right hand don't know what we're doing, right? Left-hand, any, any, this is our third public hearing.
Not enough information.
Not enough information. Any, any comment? Fourteen more jobs. That's, okay, any to the right? Okay, remember, that's tonight. We've talked about fifty jobs and we just heard a presentation just a few weeks ago. We've got over two hundred jobs that's unfilled. So, there's, there's another fifty. We're gonna have to come up with someone that wants to work. Tell people there's jobs out there. They got to want to work. I just got a, a text message today. They offered a guy a full-time job and he wouldn't take it. And I don't know how you feel sorry for somebody, but they wanted to go to school, but they were willing to work with him, but they would not take a full-time job. It's hard to bite off when you teach them in school and you're trying to push careers. They've got, they have to make the move. And we can, we can bring a thousand jobs in, but can we fill them? And then, when people from outside of McDowell County start filling those jobs, we're the first ones that start getting the complaints because there's, there's no work. There's a, there's plenty of work here. Good pay in manufacturing jobs is exactly what we were told. So.
I would add a little bit to that. You know, I hear this quite often about jobs and things. What we talked about now, we already may redundant. We talked about the one twenty-four we closed out and the thirty-six that we're going to give incentive to, then the fourteen. And what was it, about three months ago? How many was it that Bowldorf, we gave incentive for? How much was there? I mean, it was.
Forty, was it forty or fifty, somewhere in that range?
Forty somewhat.
Forty, forty-six jobs or something?
Yeah. And then, the new industry on Bowlin Avenue, an old textile building that did not ask for incentive, I think. They're, they always have twenty-five in it, something like that.
They're approaching that, I believe.
Okay. So, there's a lot of jobs. It's actually coming into the county and that word might not be getting out. I don't know.
You have career fairs coming up, college fair coming up next time, pretty soon, so.
I'll make a statement. A couple of these jobs that are manufacturing, they are in clean, air-conditioned facilities. Okay, you gonna go talk to people that threw plywood in non-air-conditioned facilities about work? These are people that will not run a machine in an air-conditioned facility. The jobs are there and you pick, some people can make very good money. All they gotta do is show up and work.
Motion to go out of public hearing. The motion, yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Gentlemen? We'll need a motion to approve the incentive.
I'll make a motion to approve this second incentive for create fourteen jobs, forty-two thousand dollars over a three-year period.
I would say.
The motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, brings us down to, other than the citizen comment, let me say this just real quick. Citizen comment, we have a sign-up board if anyone wants to sign up to speak and what your subject matter would be. So, if anyone wants to sign up, you're welcome to come forward and, and sign. We can pass this around if we'd like to. And just, yeah, Ms. Johnson, if you don't mind, just to pass that back through. What we'll do while we're looking is reports and communications. Or you have a?
We've got a little bit of discussion on the ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry. I marked that.
It's a perfect segue, so it's really good timing.
I marked that when I checked it.
Chairman Walker obviously couldn't be here tonight, but he did express a desire for the board to discuss and recommend to the planning board that there be some evaluation of, of our existing lake protection ordinance to see if there needs to be any revision to that ordinance. And I, I don't think I'm going out on a limb, but I think he had a recommendation that there be some changes. And he, I do not have the list in front of me of things that he, he was interested in looking at. But some of the things that have come up deal with average lot size, setbacks and that sort of thing. But I will get his, his list from him. But there was a desire from him and Commissioner Brown for the planning board to examine our ordinances and specifically the Lake James Protection Ordinance and to see if any recommendation needs to come back from the planning board on any changes. So, I know there may be some interest and desire here. I know the two that aren't here had that desire for the planning board to do that. So, it's kind of in your lap to do that.
I know. I spoke with Chairman Walker this evening and he, he shared with me some of the concerns. I don't, I did not write those down. Some of it may just be nothing more than some verbiage or words changing and just take a look at that because there, there has been some concern. And that was what he voiced to me. And just to take a little bit more time to work with that for both parties involved, the county, the residents and the developer. So, that was his concern, gentlemen. Maybe just a few little things here and probably put that back to the, the board. Anything that we have, we probably need to write down Ron's here. If you've been thinking about it, we need to take another week. I think his direction was, what he would like to see, and maybe Commissioner Brown, too, is that we put, take that back to the planning board for them to look at, review. And any suggestions that we may have or if we need to sit down and talk with the planning board as a group. He'd even mentioned that, that do we need to, do we need to sit down with the planning board and have a discussion, too? So, so it's open to y'all. That's kind of what he had to pass on. You want to start with our senior or you want to start with the?
I think, based on emails and the comments that I've received and all that, it's, it's totally appropriate to really go back and examine what we have right now and ensure that, you know, it's totally currently appropriate or if there needs to be any revisions. You know, I don't have anything to propose, but it's, it would be good to really examine everything closely.
I don't particularly have a problem with the planning board looking at it. I don't want to make any decisions until those two commissioners are here to make the decisions. That's gotta be a five-member board decision and not one of us. So, all of us is here. If the planning board wants to look at it, if the planning board comes back and says they don't want to change anything, I've got faith in our planning board. But if they want to look at it, I have no problem with that.
That's just more on, on that.
Yeah, I think all of us need to be, you know, I mean, I can't speak for David. I can't speak for Tony. I can only speak for me. And, but I felt like that that's what they were wanting to do, just go that route. You know, there may be some concerns brought to our attention that we haven't looked at or just, I haven't fully studied the entire ordinance out. To be honest with you, I haven't, I personally have not looked completely through everything. And maybe something there, just to clean it up a little and, you know, whatever needs to, whatever needs to occur. And again, I don't know, you know, I don't know if Ron wants to make any, you're just here listening, follow our directions. So, if you had any comment or anything coming from his department. So, gentlemen, what we'll need to do is, I guess, Mr. Wood can get a direction from, from y'all is to, to place that back to the planning board, but we need more specifics than just sending it back to them to review. So.
What staff will do, will get comments, I'm sure, from the public tonight.
Right.
We'll make sure those are carried forward. But as far as the board, we will get any of the, the three of you that have any comments or questions even about the existing ordinances. But if there are comments of specific areas, like Chairman Walker mentioned, we will certainly pass that on to the board and say, these are areas of interest that have come up a lot. You know, please think about it and make a recommendation, one way or the other. But we will, we've got a couple of weeks before they meet. And we can probably ask to have a recommendation back at the October meeting.
We need a motion for that.
You could do it. I think you could do it by consensus.
Okay, okay, let's do it by consensus. All in favor of that?
I'm in favor of that.
So, that's a majority of us here tonight. And we'll make sure that those two are involved in that. We get all the information. Like, again, we're fixing to come up on citizen comment and it appears that the five we've got listed, that's the main topic. I don't see anything any different, so. And it may give us some insight tonight, too. Okay, all right. Citizen comment, you want to do reports and communications, anything? How do you want to handle it?
All I would, we'll get the date out on the, or the timeline on the groundbreaking, November twenty, September twenty-second.
Okay.
Hope all of you can be there for that, for the Nebo Waterline.
You're gonna be at three o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Possible.
I think that's all I had.
Any other commissioner have any reports? All right. I guess we're up to six twenty for citizen comment. All right, we just, we'll be returning back after citizen comment. It appears that we have met everything on our agenda tonight.
Sure.
We do have another meeting upstairs with our cooperative extension for the report to the county.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Have a second.
I have a question.
Okay. We call your motion.
Our final motion, correct.
It'd be, is it appropriate to, to make a comment or ask for information based on some of the comments we've heard or not? It'll be our discussion. I won't be asking.
We can discuss. We can discuss.
You guys can do what you want.
Okay, I would just go and ask for, into, I guess, we all would want. I would like to have some of these ordinances like Burke County's, McDowell's and this various guidelines and things that Cressit goes by and, and some of these maybe.
For information for us?
Yes, all this information for us. I'm sat down, because I'm hearing all this, but I don't really have it, everything before me to where I can see where a difference is at. And I would like to have a plot of, of the peninsula such as what we've seen here. And I wouldn't mind.
We have, we can get a copy. We can get a copy, too.
And I wouldn't mind even going and taking a tour.
We can, we've walked it before. We can go back and walk again.
You know, I, I, I think there's something we need to be very thorough in and.
As far as the other ordinances from other counties, we will get those. And if the public had any others that we might miss, we'll certainly take those, too.
We can certainly, we have things that we've got that we could email. We have it emailed us. I don't know if I have it on date and we don't know who to look at and who not to. We could do that. And I've got some things that we could read here that, they're not the ordinances, but I know George put together, my George put together quite a few suggestions based on those ordinances that it would probably give you an idea of what we're talking about, the kinds of changes that are needed at a minimum.
It may be good to have some, maybe Ron's got some information, too.
Yes.
Because that was my thought, maybe Burke County. As well as we work with them, we, we work well with Burke County. So, okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.